All right. Good afternoon. We are, I am so sorry. We've been on calls all afternoon and it's the first time this happened. So, sorry to make you late. We know your time is by, but welcome. It's August 5th, 2024. Better start buying Christmas gifts pretty soon. It's getting close. We're grateful that you're here. It's nice to have a room full here today. This is Rowan County Commission. We start by doing a couple of things each, each time. We're gonna have a pledge of allegiance. We're also gonna have our chaplain to come forward. Chaplain Taylor, and Chaplain Taylor is going to do what's called a solemnizing prayer. And I always define that solemnizing prayer is for the commissioners. It's not for you. It's a legal issue. And so, we got a lot going on these days and wisdom is something that is to us better than knowledge. And so, we ask for wisdom. We ask for our chaplain to come forward and the world is kind of on fire these days. And so, we pray for our world, but also pray for wisdom for those in leadership that they would know the best thing to do. And that's all we ask for in Rowan County, that the five of us and those that are helping us can do things that are in the best interest of everyone in Rowan County. Commissioners, if you'll join me, we'll get started. And chaplain, if you'll come forward.
It's all good. I thought I was in the Baptist church.
You'll tell that when, when we send around a collection.
We appreciate you and we're glad to pray for you. Lord, we come to today and we thank for this privilege to pray. Thank for the privilege to pray for our county commissioner, Lord. We thank them, Lord, and we thank for what the work they do, dear Lord, and pray that today you give them the wisdom they need, Lord. Please help them in all they do, Lord, because in the world we live in today, we all need wisdom and they especially need wisdom to do what they do for Rowan County. For you build them, help them, and guide them, lead them, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Chaplain Taylor, thank you for being with us as always. We appreciate it. Madam Clerk, and I have no idea what they are. I know they're, okay. So, you are organized today and I am not. So, I know there's a deletion to be done. Item KK, KK is gonna be deleted with your approval. Then we've got some additions. Would you walk us through those? And please, we'll make these part of my motion for additions. What about TT? Is there any, anything? Okay, I got, yep, 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 yep. Okay. All right, I've got one deletion. We've got some additions. So, you guys know where we are now. All right. Do we have a motion then to approve the agenda as amended? Second?
Second.
All right, all in favor say aye. Aye. By the way, welcome back, Mike. Mike, where you been? I know. We're, we're, go ahead and, go ahead and tell us, tell us where you were.
I have to shoot us the details.
No, I just had my annual training in Virginia for National Guard.
About three weeks?
Three weeks, yeah.
About three weeks National Guard. So, we appreciate Mike. All right. All right, then consent agenda, items A through Z. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I, if I may, if you intend to discuss LL, then you would also ask to remove T, which is a subdivision plant.
Yeah, because that's on consent. That would cause a problem, wouldn't it? All right, so we'll remove item T.
And then?
And item MM. I'm sorry.
LL.
LL. LL, item LL. All right, anything else? Removing it, yeah. We're removing it, yeah. We'll bring it back, yeah. All right, motion to approve consent agenda then. Second? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, we have public comment period. We have two folks that are signed up for public comment. First of all, we've got, let's see, Mr. Bobby Kemp. And then following Bobby, we'll have Greg Alcorn. So, Mr. Kemp, welcome. It's good to see you.
Good evening. It's good to see y'all this afternoon. I just had a phone call not too long ago that I've had a sister, an older sister, that's been rushed to the hospital by ambulance. So, I'm gonna cut short what I got to say. I just wanted to follow up on a couple of things from when I was here last time. As you know, I'm still concerned about the seniors, the veterans, and the disabled, which I am one of, all three. And I question myself after-
Hey, Mr. Kemp, we wanna hear you. Everyone wants, if, just pull it in front of you and speak, speak right into it like this.
Is that better, sir?
It's perfect. Thank you.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry. I apologize.
You're good.
But, like I say, I've just had a sister rush to the hospital by ambulance. I'm gonna leave shortly and go straight there. Last time I was here at the meeting, you know, as I spoke on seniors, the veterans, and disabled, like I did in February, still concerned about the property valuation, the taxes we're paying. And I promise I'm gonna be nice today. Maybe I wasn't last time, but I will be today. Still concerned about that. And I left here with my concerns. And then I came back later and I watched the direction of commissioners meeting here that afternoon. And Mr. Green, I heard you make the statement that everything y'all did was governed through the representatives of North Carolina. And sure, you're 100% correct. I've done my homework. I got in on that and I followed up on it. But also, I was, and I've made a lot of phone calls. I've talked to a lot of people without bringing up names. But even though you've got that authorization through them, that does not mean every time that you do it, you have to go up on our taxes. The commissioners have 100% responsibility on the tax rate and what they, what they, what they do here. And with the way I feel about this, and, and, you know, I'm, I'm not the only one here this afternoon, or maybe not here, but I hit the sidewalks. I told you last time, I'd do whatever I had to do if I had to go public to try to get, get us some help. And so, that's exactly what I did. I've talked to people in front of their houses, their driveways, and parking lots. And a lot of places I've been, I've talked to middle-aged people. I've talked to seniors. There's a lot of people that feel the same way I do. And I know when you first went up on everything, I know that you had about 500 phone calls come in. And people, the, the, the people don't have the right perception about our county commissioners. A lot of people don't realize that they can actually come here to this meeting and boast their opinion. And, and I've tried to educate a few people that, that they can. But I'm, I'm still concerned, and let me say this quickly. You know, Mr. Ibs, you and I talked about $1,000 a week that a person in Rowan County, wanted a job, they could make a, make $1,000 a week. And that, that's true. And per scenario, $1,000 a week is $52,000 a year. And people that are drawing a disabled income, the seniors, we don't, disabled, we don't get that kind of money. We don't get maybe half of that. The gentleman was here last time at the meeting. He stated that he wanted to retire, but he was only gonna be able to draw 1,700 and some dollars a month. That don't, that don't total up to a whole lot of money. And with our lower income, we still got to pay the same for gas, the same for groceries, the same for clothing. Everything we do, we've got to pay the exact same thing. And we don't have that income. That's where it's hurting us. The food prices, the gas prices up, everything has gone up. Everybody knows that everything has went up. And we just don't have the money to do that with. And after talking to a lot of these folks and putting consideration into it, and I did wanna say this. It's really good to see this group of young people here today. I always enjoy being with young people. Matter of fact, I got two of my grandsons with me. One's 14, one's 16. But they wanted to come today to see what took place here. But after putting consideration into it, and again, back on the phone and doing my math and things like that, I have decided I wanna run for county commissioner. And I'm gonna do it on this term as a write-in. As of 1:15, 1:45 this afternoon, I turned in everything that they asked me for. All I'm waiting on now is for them to tell me that everything I turned in is correct, all my signatures balance out, everything's good. And I'll be as a write-in on this coming commission, election for commissioner. I don't know what'll happen on that. Again, I'm, I'm trying to let people be aware that we need help. And, and somewhere along the line, somebody gonna say, hey, Mr. Kemp's right when he came and told us they can't afford this. I, I talked to a young couple and was glad to sign my petition for me. And they said, we'll be glad to sign it. We wanna buy a house. But we can't afford a house payment, pay the property taxes, the homeowner's insurance. We don't have the income to do that, so we gonna have to rent. I've talked to some older people. For example, a couple bought a home, 30-year finance. Well, as time went on, almost had it paid for a couple of years ago, the gentleman passes away. That left his wife just drawing her sur- surty check, not his anymore. She lost that income. And now she's got to carry everything. And it's a hardship. It's hardship for people. I'm not saying, you know, that we shouldn't have a tax increase. What I'm saying, it's totally unheard of for us to get hit with what y'all get did, once, one stroke. That's, that's not right. That's been my theory the whole time I've been here. It's not right to do us like that. It's, times are hard. But anyway, that's all I wanna say this afternoon. I don't know if I'll be back in here again or not. More than likely so. But, but anyway, I just wanna tell you still yet, that's the way I think about things. And that's the way I believed. There's a verse over in the Bible. It's my favorite Bible verse. It says, "In all thy ways acknowledge him in Proverbs, and he shall direct my paths." So, I'm leaning on God to lead me in the right direction, to give me wisdom to go forward. And again, I appreciate y'all's time this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Kemp. And you're invited back every twi- twice a month. Yes, sir. One thing that he's been talking about is there's an, an issue with, in our property tax code. The state allows, they have legislation that allows for the county to give some tax relief to folks over a certain age, which is 65, that makes below a certain amount. And so, he challenged us to look into, uh, look into that, which we did. And we've spoken to our attorney here and also to our elected officials. And, you know, that is, that is state-controlled. We asked, you know, can we define who we give discount to? And can we define the discount amount? And the county can't. Now, what can happen is the legislature could decide to exempt a whole class, say, 65 and over. Don't pay any, any taxes. Well, that would have to pass for the whole state. And that would be a hard, that would be a hard pass. They also addressed the issue of disabled veterans as one of those cases. So, those are in place and we certainly encourage folks to apply for those. And, and if we think that that's not enough relief, then we have the legislative route, which is the route that we would pursue. We also spoke to our tax, you know, I'm not gonna turn this into an item. Maybe, you know, Chip Main is here. He's our tax assessor. And one thing we asked about, and by the way, we normally don't respond. It's just kind of, kind of the, the way it is. We typically don't respond. But he's been nice enough to come here. And so, you may not know what he's talking about. We've also talked to our tax assessor, Mr. Main, to find out, you know, what, what's the number of folks that have applied for this, these exceptions? What's the total tax revenue that's been wiped out on that? And he's got that. Also asked him if we wanted to do something for certain age groups. Say it was 65 or 75 up. What would that do to a county budget? And they don't have the ability to predict that because your information doesn't go in based on your age. It goes in based on your, your home, your address, and the area that you're in. So, a lot of stuff to think about. I know that the legislators have talked to you. They called me and told you that. And so, we, we have been looking into what, what the county can do. And 100 counties together can make something different, but we can't alone. So, we kinda got our, our work cut out for us. But thank you again and look forward to maybe seeing you in two weeks. Hope you come back. And be praying for your sister. See your sister? Yes, sir. Thank you. Greg Alcorn, thank you for being here, Mr. Alcorn.
I wanted to thank Mr. Kemp for his service and make sure that, got, appreciate that. Also wanna let you know that I am not running for county commissioner like he is, but that's a-
Well, I, I actually have signs printed already for you, Greg, so.
I have three things. One is, I'm a big fan of the county commissioners and I wanted to share my appreciation for that. I have two agenda items I wanted to lift up. And one is foresee. How about that? If you say that as a word, foresee, that is, is about the, for me, it's about Knox Middle School and being able to do something there. I'm completely supportive of, of being able to do the financing and the creativity of that. I'm very appreciative. Back to the consent agenda, I also wanted to share on the 1G, the thing about the application to the First United Church Christ Foundation, that is for the One Child, One Church program. That, that I know a little bit about that foundation and, and, and that grant application that you provide, or the folks provide, is the most professional and complete one that we get. And, and they follow through. You know, they just don't take the money and run. They're able to come in and show us what the results are, come in and, and make presentations that are just terrific. So, I just wanted to share those with you.
Thank you, Greg. Hey, Greg, what, how many of those reading aids are you producing a year now?
Touchpads?
Yeah.
Yeah, about 12,000. So, and we are completely supportive of everything in Rowan County. It's the, the financing that we get from, from the state is terrific, but it's secondary to what we wanna do here in Rowan County. We're gonna keep doing it here no matter what. Really like it.
Well, we appreciate it. Greg's real involved and as a, as just a local citizen, giving back to the community and has created these, they look like an iPad, but helps kids that are maybe not in school yet begin to recognize shapes and letters and numbers and colors.
That's right. Pillars to learn how to read. It's a pre-reader.
And this is exploding all across the state.
Doing pretty good.
Yeah, so we really appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, that's, that's all the public comment. Now, we've got some celebrations. Jim?
A celebration. At this time, we are going to acknowledge and cheer and bring up Coach Brett Hatley and his East Rowan 3A State champions from 2024. Thank you for being here, fellas.
Go ahead.
A lot of you folks don't know this, but Brett Hatley actually is a West Rowan graduate. He graduated with my son in 1978, I think it was. Maybe a little bit later than that. Brett, I saw him play in Little League. I saw him play in middle school. I saw him play in high school. And he is probably the best hitter I've ever seen when the pressure is on. A lot of people can hit and, you know, when you have somebody whose curveball doesn't break and they can hit that. But Brett was always, he was always the man, as far as I was concerned, the best hitter that, that I had ever seen. So, I'll quit talking so well about him now that he's at the East Rowan coach. And I'll just let him take over and introduce his heroes here.
Thank you all for having us. Just to give you a little rundown, this group has been working hard. They play together. It's a special group. They worked hard and can't say enough about all the stuff that they've put into it, the time, their parents. We've had a lot of great support, community, staff, my coaches, my admin, athletic director. It's, it's, it's a base, it's a great baseball community. Can't thank you enough. But we, we wanna continue that tradition and we wanna keep going at it as much as we can. But this was a special time and thank you all for recognizing us. And this time I'll call it the coaches. Coach Ethan Free coming up. Coach Michael Pinkston, Coach Kelly Sparker. Our statistician was Seth Price. Our athletic director, Brian Hightower. And I'll, some of these guys, they, they weren't able to be here. Cobb, Cobb Hightower, draft pick. He's playing baseball in Arizona for the San Diego Padres. Number two, Logan Dyer. Number three, Harrison Elshia. Number four, Mason Phelps. Number five, Joe Burleson. Number six, Keaton Walker. Number seven, Nathan Collins. Number eight, Isaiah Osterhus. Number nine, Aiden Shoal. Number 10, Hunter Goodman. Number 11, Tyler Hill. Number 12, Chris Hernandez. Number 13, Nathan Chisholm. Number 14, Josiah Ninto. Number 15, Wyatt Yawn. Number 16, Braden Shive. Number 17, Will Klingler. Number 18, McCall Henderson. Number 21, Nate Hayworth. Number 22, Sam Blackwelder. And number 24, Nolan Kirkpatrick.
Does, does Cobb charge you now to have a picture taken with him since he's such a celebrity? Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that whereas the East Rowan High School Boys Baseball Team, under head coach Brett Hatley, is hereby recognized and honored for their 2024 victorious baseball season. And whereas by their extraordinary efforts, the following members of this dynamic and talented team are to be congratulated for their remarkable and triumphant season. Cobb Hightower, Logan Dyer, Harrison Alsh- Alshire, Mason Phelps, Joe Burleson, Keaton Walker, Nathan Collins, Isaiah Osterhus, Aiden Shoal, Hunter Goodman, Tyler Hill, Iris Hernandez, Nathan Chisholm, Chris, excuse me, Josiah Ninto, Wyatt Yawn, Braden Shive, Will Klingler, McCall Henderson, Nate Hayworth, Sam Blackwelder, and Nolan Kirkpatrick. And whereas due to their hard work, dedication, and their exceptional chemistry, this outstanding group of Mustangs finished out their season by claiming the 3A State Championship, which marked Coach Hatley's 100th career victory as head coach. And whereas the individual contributions from each team member were crucial to the successful season and the tremendous commitment and excellent performance to these young Rowan County men, along with their coaching staff, have proven to be a source of admiration and inspiration to the citizens of Rowan County. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the East Rowan Board, the East Rowan, the Rowan County Board of Commissioners does hereby honor and congratulate the East Rowan High School 2024 Boys Baseball Team and Coaching Staff for their incredible achievements and, and commends them for their display of sportsmanship and leadership as they represented Rowan County this fifth day of August 2024.
Well, I, I asked, is this on? Yeah, I asked Coach, I said, what was your record? And he said 34 and 2. And I said, 2? Who'd you lose to? Oh, ouch. Oh, yeah. Wow. Well, um, yeah. I saw a saying, I saw something written yesterday. Baseball is a game of failure. He who fails the least wins, right? If you can hit 333 in the bigs, you'll end up in the Hall of Fame, right, Coach? Coach, how many, how many Vance Honey Cuts do we have in this group? We got about 18 of them. Hope so. How many returning players? Raise your hand. You gonna have a good squad next year? We, we hope so. I'll share, I'll share a funny baseball story. I, I played baseball for the Red Sox. Look at all, look at me. No, I didn't. That's a lie. I, I played in high school. In my junior year, I was, I was terrible. The first time I got on base, I was the fastest on the team. Who's the fastest on the team here? He's not here? He's not here? Well, so I was just sure the coach was gonna give me the steal signal. And he went through all of his signs. One of them was not, none of them were steal, but I took it as steal. So, as soon as the pitcher twitched, man, I was gone. And I slid in headfirst. Do they like to slide headfirst? Slid in headfirst into second base. And I looked up and my catcher was standing on second base. I stole second base with a guy on it. It's pretty funny, isn't it? That's pretty good. Well, the, the re- the rest of, the rest of the stor- rest of the story is my catcher. And he got in a rundown between second and third. They overthrew third. So, he made it safely to third. The next guy up got a base hit, scored both of us, and we won the game. How about that, Coach? That's right. That's right. So, one of the most humiliating mo- much better. Yeah, I, I actually had a really good senior year. Well, that's part of the story. He, he tried to. Now, I forgot what I was gonna say. Oh, one of the most humiliating times in, in my sports career is my coach hollered at me from dugout and he said, Edz, after the game, you and me are going to my office and you're gonna tell me how you play the game of baseball? And I said, yes, sir, Coach. Still laying on my face. The, the funny thing is, 30 years later, I'm at Fenway Park with my son, true story. And I get alerted by one of my high school friends that my baseball coach happened to be there the same night. Now, I grew up in central Florida. So, my baseball coach is there the same night. They gave me his seat numbers. And I walked up and sat down next to him during a Yankees-Red Sox game. game in the third inning and was able to relay to him. He was just, we were just shocked, first time we seen each other in all that time. And my baseball coach is someone that I look back on as being one of the most influential men in my life. In fact, our senior year, up until last year, we had the most successful baseball squad in our school history. And my coach wrote to me a handwritten note on school letterhead, just recounting the success that I'd gone from being terrible my junior year to a key player at my senior year. And he just said, I enjoyed watching your success. And I framed that picture and I have it up today and that was in 1981. I know y'all don't even know that that's in the same, it's AD, it's 1981 AD. But my coach became, and in fact, my brother's son just graduated from high school and we went down for a party and that coach was there at that party. And we stood there for a half hour talking about specific plays that happened in 1981 on the way to our championship. So I know you guys have a heart for him. He throws everything out there for you guys. I know a little bit about the nerves of baseball, the fact that you can hit a ball going at those speeds, but it's a real discipline. It's a team sport. We're really proud of you. We have a great heritage of sports here in Rowan County. But I'm always amazed and from a county perspective, we don't have to officially pull for any specific school, but we're just so proud of all of you because when you go out of here, you're ambassadors for us. And the way you carry yourself and the way you talk and the way you do or don't throw your bat, it means something. And so we appreciate that you are a billboard for us when you leave this community. And so for those of you who are moving on, going off to college, carry the same thing with you, except for more important, you represent yourself and your family and in this community. And so we wish you all the best. We're really proud of you. We thank you for the work that you put in and we're really grateful for the coaches because I understand you're doing it for the money, right? Yeah, you're not. I know that, right? Superintendent, they're not doing it for the money. They're doing it for the love of kids and I hope you guys get that. Shake your head if you do. All right. Congratulations, you guys. We really appreciate you. How about a hand of applause for the next one? Did you, did you get the pictures you want? Mike? All right. Thank you for indulging that. That's important and we value those guys and the ladies that we had before him and his granddaughter that's the athlete of the world, I think. So thank you for indulging that. All right, we're gonna move on to our regular agenda via health update. Welcome. Good to see you again. You grew a beard since I've seen you last, I think.
Yes, sir. It's funny how that happens when you're not paying attention. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you for having me. This is, I don't have anything nearly as fun as baseball to talk about, sorry to say, but as part of our commitment to our Boards of Commissioners, we want to always be given a regular update about what's going on at our organization and that is what I'm here to do today. So thank you for having me. So it's, it's pretty exciting times in the world of Medicaid managed care across North Carolina because as of July 1 of this year, we kicked off our tailored plans across the state. And there are four MCOs operating a tailored plan across the state now and Via Health is proud to be one of those. So tailored plans, just to give a quick overview of what tailored plans are, tailored plans are designed to put members first. They're designed to meet everyone's health needs, all the health needs in one plan. And they're also designed to give support from our tailored care managers. So our tailored plan, we have dubbed Via Total Care. And these are plans for folks that have serious mental illness, severe substance use disorders, intellectual and developmental disabilities, as well as traumatic brain injuries. Here's a map of the current MCOs that are operating tailored plans across the state. So how can, how do people know which tailored plan they're in? Well, folks started receiving letters sometime in mid, late April that inform them of the tailored plan that they are in. There is only one tailored plan per county, so that assigned tailored plan is based on the county that manages Medicaid benefits and for Rowan County, that is Via Health. So what's new in these plans? Providers must be in network to be covered. Members may have to choose a new primary care physician. This, this change is open until January 31 of next year for folks to get that done. And there are more covered services under these new plans. But there's a lot that's staying the same. Each plan are still covering the same services as before. Waitlist members keep their spots. If folks are on an innovations waitlist or a TBI waiver waitlist, they will keep their spot in line. And if folks have been working with a tailored care manager at Via Health, they'll get to keep their same tailored care manager. Here are a few examples of some of the services that tailored plans can offer that are not offered by the standard plans, which is the other Medicaid plan that's operating in North Carolina. And as you can see, those, these are the more high-end, high-need services that are offered by the tailored plan. Okay, so what's new for Via members? Well, folks should have started receiving their ID card with the primary care physicians listed on the card. Members have access to our behavioral health crisis line, our member and recipient services line. Now, members also have access to a pharmacy line, a nursing line, and scheduling line for non-emergency Medicaid transportation. And there's all this information in the member handbook and welcome packet. So with Via Total Care, there's also a few perks that come with that. Wellness perks such as home-delivered meals, voucher for Weight Watchers, gift cards for vaccines, pregnancy perks, GED perks, which is, which we're really proud of, that can offer education vouchers for folks to pursue their GED. Safety perks, there's discount vouchers on home safety and assistance equipment that's not covered by Medicaid. And as I said earlier, non-medical transportation, folks can get these trips to grocery stores, markets, libraries, things of that nature. The non-emergency Medicaid transportation for physical and behavioral health appointments. So those would cover both types of appointments. Okay, and here's just a few of the things that tailored care managers help our members with. We're really proud of our tailored care management model. We think it's a, it's a really robust system to help members get the care that they need and navigate the healthcare system because it is, from personal experience, it can be really tricky at times. So it's always nice to have somebody there helping along the way. And that is all I have. I'm happy to answer questions.
She asks our questions. She's good at this.
Thank you for that sentiment, Commissioner Closeman. That is very accurate.
Federal program, isn't it?
Yes, so through Medicaid, yes, it's federally funded.
How do you tailor stuff when it's a federal program?
Well, there are regs that we have to ensure, you know, regulations have to be followed no matter what, but the way that Medicaid managed care has been designed for the state of North Carolina, it gives each MCO kind of that, the breadth to be able to tailor specific supports for their local regions. It gives, gives leeway for flexibility for each specific region because of course, as we know, this region is far different from, let's say, a coastal region of North Carolina. So we've just got different resources and we're able to tailor those resources a little bit, you know.
What, they estimate a pot of money for you and then you just tailor the programs that you can add to it or keep out of it or?
Correct. Our funding is capitated, so.
It is what?
Capitated. So we get a certain amount of funding for each member and we have to tailor the services based on what we get.
Zach, maybe, if you could maybe just explain when you talk about a member, who are you talking about and how do they become a member?
Good question. So anyone who's receiving Medicaid through our plan is considered a member. We consider those folks members and that comes with all of the accessibility to services and supports that our members are afforded. If folks are interested in becoming a member, they can go onto our website, they can look at where our handbook lays out the services and the supports that we can offer. But really, the first step is looking at eligibility for Medicaid. And so if folks are interested in seeing if they're eligible, I would encourage them to either visit their local DSS office and ask someone about Medicaid eligibility, or they could even go online to the NC ePass system and do that through the online portal to check their eligibility.
And eligibility, this would be for people that don't have insurance through their work or are over 65 and getting Medicare. So we're talking about uninsured people and they have to have a, it's an income limited program, correct?
Yes, there are income caps, but with North Carolina expanding Medicaid this past year, those income caps have risen. So now there, there's a large chunk of folks that are now eligible that weren't otherwise. Absolutely.
Any further questions? Always good to see you. You're always welcome.
Thank you.
So bring chocolate next time. That would be helpful.
Yes, sir. Thank you all. I appreciate you.
Public road naming, a Friendship Lane? Oh, it's you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Be my best Pam Ely impression here. So Ms. Ely submitted this agenda item. We have two, a public hearing for two road names. So if you look at the first one here, we'll just do them together if that's fine with the board. This would be a proposed road name of Compton Drive that extends off the 11,900 block of Shen Road. And all that road will be, or it's really a driveway, it's about a half mile long, currently serves one residence. There's a permitted second dwelling and once, they have plans for two additional on these parcels here. So once the third one has been issued, that's when it would have to be named. So the driveway proposed is Compton Drive and it would change the addresses for the one residence, the one proposed, and then be a placeholder for those two new ones up here on the western side of the land. But the only folks impacted are the Comptons and they signed the petition. The second one is for proposed road name of Friendship Lane. It involves two property owners here, 8606 and 8600 Smith Road. And this first came to our office based on those addresses being out of sequence. And if you know you're going down the road, you expect the road names to either climb or decline, odd on the one side, even on the other. And this threw a red flag for where it could send our 911 folks. If you look here, those depicted addresses would be down this way, quite a number of homes south. And to make things more complicated, Smith Road transitions right here at Enixville School, making it more confusing. So we did have one of the two property owners sign the petition and Friendship Lane was the proposal and hopefully that means they get along. So any rate, the proposed name would be Friendship Lane, change those two addresses and also be a placeholder if they ever added a third residence that's already named and we'll have to come back to the board. So any questions about these two?
All right. Don't go anywhere. All right, we'll open up the floor for a public hearing. If anyone would like to speak on the issue of the renaming of the roads, then that would be a time to do that, if you'd like to come forward. All right. Hearing none, then we'll close the public. Commissioners, do we have a motion to approve of a name change of Compton and Friendship? And Friendship. Do we have a motion?
Chairman, I make a motion.
All right, second. Any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you. Shane, thank you. Appreciate it. Anna?
Hello.
We're gonna turn your mic on.
Got it. All right, so we are asking for a public hearing and then findings resolution related to the financing that we need to complete for three projects. The new school for Rowan Salisbury, replacing Knox, roof repairs that they need, and Kannapolis City Schools has an elementary school that they have a project that we are contributing to. It's a large project, but they've only asked us for 1.56.
Our share.
Our share, yes. All of these were included, the debt was included in the, in the budget, so. All of these were included, the debt was included in the, in the budget, so.
You have more? All right, so Kannapolis, a lot of folks don't know that we have Rowan County students in Kannapolis. Our superintendent may be able to tell us how many, I don't know, but it's a matter of math. We determine what percentage of Rowan County schools in Kannapolis we have students in and then we share in the expenses of those. And so they have some repairs that need to go on with some roofs. It's roofs, right?
Theirs is a elementary school.
Elementary school. I'm sorry, roofs are ours.
Roofs are ours.
Roofs are ours. And so that's the ask from us and we're required to do that, basically, yeah. Second one is, we worked with school superintendent and finance officer and the school board on roof needs for Rowan County schools. I think that was somewhere in the neighborhood of $16 million. Yeah. And so, yeah.
That's, that was the estimate at the time, sir.
Yeah. You know, that, that's amazing because I, you know, we talk with folks all the time about, wasn't a few years ago, we couldn't afford to put a roof on, on a school, right? And now we're taking care of these pretty easily. So that's good news. And then, of course, the big item is gonna be Knox. And I hate to bring up old negative news, but we should see this coming, right? The school board and the county, years ago, I don't, do you know what the year is, Madam Superintendent? Probably 12? 2011, 2012, they entered into some negotiations and part of the agreement in that negotiation was to rebuild Knox Middle School. So some things have come up since then. The school system asked that we first replace schools out in West Rowan, so Cleveland Elementary. That was out of big necessity because I think Woodleaf had a water issue. They didn't, they didn't have wells that could serve the students. And Woodleaf, beautiful school and great history that it had was in bad need of replacement. My kids went to Woodleaf, by the way. So we built a new Cleveland Elementary School first and so now we are on to the next, well, really the first part of that agreement, right? With an intermission, I guess we would call in the middle. So, so part of this agreement is to rebuild Knox. If you've not been down the road in front of Knox, there is no Knox any longer, it's gone. So we're looking forward to replacing that. So that's a little explanation as to what we're doing and so now what?
But now, I think, is, the public hearing is first and then you would read the findings resolution. I do have other people here, if you have any specific questions about how we're looking at doing this and, and all those types of things, but I guess, I just need to know what your questions are to help address them.
So in my packet, the second page, I see resolution authorizing the filing of an application. Is that it?
Yeah, so that'll be after the public hearing.
Yes, yes. But my question to you is, this is three pages long with exhibits. Do I have to read all of that?
No, you just have to read the title of it.
Okay, the resolution, okay, authorizing. All right, good. All right, so now is the time that we'll open the floor. We're gonna have a public hearing on the funding of those three projects. Probably most significant?
Yeah, so the Knox is 55 million, but we are looking at doing this all as one debt package to save on some other costs.
So significant expenditure for the school system and... Anyone wanna speak? Anyone not wanna speak? Raise your hand. All right, we'll close the public hearing and then would we vote on the resolution?
I got a couple of questions.
Yes. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Hey, you're right. So it's 50... My computer's not working, so I don't know. Did we get the email with the, did we get that and those numbers broken down somewhere?
So, I'm not sure that it was all broken out, but it's 55 million for the school, 16 million for the roofs, and then 1.56 for the...
All right.
But the total debt is 73 because there's some other costs involved with closing out.
Right, so, so there were bids for the school and they came in at 55 million?
There were bids for the school and they came, if you include all the soft cost fees and other things that they have some estimates on, they're, the bid for the school project itself was not 55 million. But when you look at the architect fees and other things that are involved, we're at, we're over 55 million slightly.
What, what they did to, to bring it to 55 million is they increased their contingency to a, the contingency for the project is 2,2459, which, you know, if they reduce their contingency by a million, then the project would be, that's how they balance it within the 55 million. Got the demo, 687,000. Total, I guess this right here would be 5,756, 5,756,184. Soft costs, we're seeing approximately 8 million. That includes solar, which is an addition. So it's not really, here they come in as a magic number, 55 million. They, they balance that out by the contingency.
Gotcha, okay. My understanding is there's really two projects going on here. One would be the construction for the new school, which came in at 45, and then the upfits for elementary school. Or for the, I'm sorry, for the middle school, Knox and...
Good afternoon.
Hey, so yeah, I guess I, we need to answer that question. There was 45 for Knox, I believe, right?
45 is for the, the construction of the project, which is a 3-8 school. Grades three through eight.
And the other school we left standing.
Overton is still standing, that is correct. There is not any cost inside this estimate that has anything to do with Overton.
So, actually first, thanks for being here. Because I don't know how many times the school system asks for money and no one shows up to ask the question, so. So three through eight, so right now, I guess when, when Knox was closed, those students went somewhere else. But what grades were, what grades were Knox before, six, seven, eight?
That is correct. Grades six through eight before it closed.
Okay, and so if you were in grades one through five, then there've been no adjustments. The only people that had to move anywhere were the middle school kids.
Correct. If you were in fifth grade, obviously for sixth grade, you would've gone somewhere else the next year instead of Knox. But that is correct. They are still at Overton.
Is Overton operating at this moment?
Yes, sir. On Thursday it will be.
So are, so what'll happen, because somewhere there's a school that's one through five now, is it gonna go to one through three?
So Overton currently is K through five. When the 3-8 opens, it will become pre-K through two. We are adding pre-K to the Overton campus as we move those students. We actually will start adding pre-K before Knox is supposed to open, but by the time, when it does open, we will be able to have a larger number of pre-K classes at Overton than currently. Actually, as of the end of this year, they didn't have any at Overton. As we start next year, they will have one.
And is there, and I apologize, you know, I've missed a couple of meetings for military. Have we gotten a presentation on what the buildings look like or do we even have that at this point or is this, we're too far down?
We do. We've presented the, our school board has seen the initial drawings. Of course, they went through, we're still in bid process, so there, some of it is preliminary drawings, but we do have the initial drawing. I don't have it with me, but I'd be glad to get it to you so that you can see it. We presented it to the board, probably, our board, sorry, back in probably the fall, late fall, they've seen the initial drawings.
When, when would this open?
Fall of 2026, if the project stays on time.
How big a pre-K group do you expect to have?
Next year or how many do we expect to have when we open full?
When you open?
We are currently studying the numbers of pre-K. The estimated programs are somewhere between 10 and 12 pre-K classes when we're fully open pre-K two.
Will those be on a voluntary basis? How will you choose?
So we have quite a few different pre-K options. We have different Title I, we have EC pre-Ks, we have North Carolina pre-Ks, and each program has different qualifications of how you access, access that program. We haven't made a definitive decision on how many of which kind we would have. We have to assess the need. We have pre-K needs, of course, all over the county. For example, our Southern End schools are growing, so their pre-K programs are not, we're having to make decisions about those, but it doesn't make sense to move the pre-K program from Landis to Overton. Those students would not be able to access. So we just have to do a large-scale study as we open those and see which kind best fits the needs of the community that we're serving and how we transport kids and make sure that we can get them there. But we are, as you know, certain, and Mr. Alcorn was here earlier, that pre-K is a priority for us as well.
I don't know that this community has ever pushed pre-K before. I'd like to applaud you for that. I think that is one of the areas that we can turn around, well, not just scores, but we can turn around kids' lives who can learn to read then by the third grade or so. But thank you for, for that idea. I've been trying for years to get pre-K, more emphasis on pre-K.
Thank you.
So just, I think I understand, I know this project's changed a few times over the years. There's no elementary schools closing, right?
There is, that's correct. We're not planning to close additional facilities.
One time they were gonna close one, I think.
Yes, sir. This project has been probably a decade or more in conversation. The mediation agreement was signed in 2014. I looked while you were talking. So we're 10 years into that conversation and the project has changed scope multiple times.
I think prior to your arrival, we had a price on a replacement, I don't want to exaggerate the number, but it was north of 80 million?
Mm-hmm. 16 million north of 80 million, yes. We were, I think the last price we heard was about 96 when we were looking at it in a very different type of project.
But that was a K8?
Yes, sir. That would've brought the entire thing under one roof.
Those kind of dollars, you're really rivaling a high school.
Correct.
You're also taking in twice the number of students that you would a high school. We've gone from 96.
Yes, sir.
Are there any more coupons that we could use?
I would say our, our board worked really closely with the architects and our firm to stay firm on the number of what the project, our budgeted amount and what the project was. But we were very happy with their proposed draft of the project as well. And if I may, you mentioned that students went to other schools and they did. We do have students in other schools and I know that's been a question. But I do wanna call out that of the schools where they have gone, two of them are now exceeding 90% capacity. It's, it's not something we can hold them in that space. We are making decisions every day of how we move students around and we'll have to make them again at the end of this year to make sure that we're serving students appropriately. It isn't that there's tons of room in our other middle schools. We actually, as I said, two of them are exceeding, approaching and exceeding 90% of their capacity now.
I do, I do wanna point out one other thing and which I guess has to do with our increased financial capacity, but originally, when this conversation began, it was a 40 million dollar project, right? Remember that, but.
I do.
Well, you were here before.
I do.
And that number was arrived at because we had debt rolling off and so we were gonna replace debt for debt. Were able to pull together an additional 15 for school needs. That's how that number got to 55 instead of 40. Other questions?
I got some for Anna. Obviously, nothing's in stone here, but it's sort of rumor going around that there may be a rate cut next month. So how will that affect, or will we wait till next month to see where that happens first or?
So Amy, I will let Amy speak to that. She is, works with First Tryon, she's our financial advisor. She's been helping me put all this together to take to the LGC. So she probably has a lot more knowledge about that than I do. So, yes.
Great. Good afternoon.
Presidential rates first?
Well, great. Thank you for inviting me here this evening, or this afternoon. Great segue into, I guess, what I can comment on. So yes, I think there is a rumor right now that, you know, there may be a rate cut ahead. I will say that as soon as the market starts thinking that way, it's already being built in. So there's really not a, an advantage to waiting, especially when you, when you're putting a bond package together, that takes a couple of months. And we also have to get on the calendar of the local government commission, which is sometimes a challenge. So we have a date secured right now for September and mid-September. So if we lose that date or if we wanna postpone things, the challenge with that is then the county will need to have their audit in hand and that could push things into, you know, 2025. So we're trying to be mindful of timing and meeting the county's needs on this. But typically, our recommendation is don't try to time the market because as soon as we think we have it figured out, it shifts on us. But right now, I think we've had a really good momentum in the market. The past week, we've seen interest rates coming down as a result of the weaker employment report last week. But yeah, interest rates seem to be poised, you know, in our space, when there's rumors about a, you know, potential recession out there, that's not, that's usually good news for the bond market, so, in a perverse kind of way. So, but yeah, that is something we're, we're being mindful of.
I think too, Amy, we're planning to do this as a public sale, not like an installment financing that we did with like the Weston Plaza, the airport. So I don't know if she wants to, there's a difference. So I don't know if Amy wants to explain a little bit of that.
Sure. So it's been a little while since you all have accessed the public bond market. Over the last couple of years, we've seen a shift in what banks can provide in terms of interest rates versus the public market. And right now, we're looking at a difference of about, you know, 0.75%, or 75 basis points lower in the public market. And so when we ran the analysis side by side of, you know, public market bonds versus, you know, placing this debt with a, with a bank, the savings were, were significant. You were looking at, on a potentially $71 million of debt, that comes out to be about $350,000 a year of annual savings going into the public market. So that's why we're recommending moving in that direction.
Does one or the other of those move more quickly from a market response standpoint?
I would say the, the public market. I mean, the public market moves every, every minute of the day, so that's much more, that moves much more quickly. The bank market is really dependent on bank... The bank market is really dependent on bank cost of funds. Um, so it's a little more difficult to pinpoint exactly like how they, how they're putting their pricing together. And so sometimes that could take several weeks to a month to, to shift.
So if we vote on this tonight, then when do we anticipate locking in our rates?
Uh, so that would be on our, at our bond sale in September, uh, which right now is scheduled September, September 19th, I believe, so, yeah. Um, so mid-September, that's when we sell the bonds. We, um, another recommendation that's being made, uh, this, this afternoon is we would have to hire an underwriter for a public sale. Um, and actually, in this case, given the size, we're recommending that there's a senior manager, uh, senior managing underwriter and a secondary co-manager underwriter. Uh, that's another thing that the, the local government commission and our firm as well. Uh, when you get to a certain size bond issue, it's advisable to have a second underwriter at the table. You know, more, more people to, to sell bonds to and create competition and, and bring more investors in. Um, so, um, so that's another, another piece. But at, on that sale date, that will be the day that the underwriters actually will sell your bonds to investors. And at the end of that, that sale period, they will make a, a firm bid to the county, uh, to, to lock in coupons and yields on those particular bonds. Um, and at that point, there will be no more interest rate risk to the county.
And does our, uh, will our bond rating, I mean, I'm sure it's quite helpful, we've got a great bond rating, so that, that's gonna help.
Yes, yes. In the double A category, uh, you all are in really good shape from a credit perspective. It's been a while since you've, you know, you've sold bonds in the public market, so there's not a lot of supply out there for Rowan County bonds. So all of that should be favorable and this, in general, North Carolina, uh, bonds sell very well, so.
What, who do you actually sell these to?
Um, so the underwriter would sell.
Hedge funds or?
It would be, yeah, it'd be a variety. It could be, um, hedge funds, investment, money manager accounts, um, uh, thinking like the Vanguard's, the, just the, the bond funds, municipal bond funds, so.
Can you tie that money up for 15 years?
So your bonds will be selling in the, so once the bonds are placed with investors, they could sell those bonds in the secondary market. So, um, it's not necessarily, so you're locking in, your interest rates are held, you know, for 20 years. Um, but the, the investors themselves, they're being actively traded out in the, in the secondary market after that. So the, to the investor, they're not necessarily holding that bond for 10 years or 15 years or 20 years. They could, you know, at whatever time they seem, you know, they, they can always sell that to another investor. So those bonds get traded.
You, you're not exactly asking the public to go out into, you know, put $500 apiece into the bond market?
No, I mean, but they can sell to retail investors too. So if that's something that, if you have, um, local folks that are interested in selling or, or buying Rowan County bonds, they can, you can put them in touch with the underwriter and, you know, that's, that's always a possibility. But they're generally, especially when you're selling $71 million of bonds, they're sold in minimum $5,000 increments. Um, so we're not selling, you know, $500 here or there. It's usually larger, larger blocks of, of bonds, um, that are being sold.
Is there, um, kind of normally, when we borrow money, I guess through installment loans or whatever they're called, uh, you know, we budget amount of money and then we may not borrow all that at once, right? We kind of bring it down as we need it. Is the bonds, we get all of the 70 some million dollars at once and put it in our bank? Or how does that work?
Right. So you would issue it all at once, um, but you can be investing that money. So you're right, you don't spend it all on a day one. It takes, you know, 18 months to 24 months to build a project. Uh, so that money would be invested over that period of time. So, uh, we would work with Anna and her team to make some recommendations on where that money gets invested. Usually it's with the management, capital management trust or some other, um, bond fund specific for, uh, you know, cities and counties. Um, but right now, those yields are actually, you, you would be able to, to earn more than the, the cost of your debt currently. So that's a good thing. So even though you're borrowing a little bit earlier, then maybe you might need the money. You should be able to invest that money at a rate at least as high as your borrowing costs. So that, those interest costs are largely offset by those additional interest earnings.
What do you think a target rate is now? I'm just interested in.
Um, you're probably looking below 4%, uh, maybe 3.75%. Interest rates have moved a lot over the last, you know, week or so. So, uh, so that could, that could continue to change. Um, but yeah, I would say right now about 3.75% for a 20-year, uh, transaction, so.
But our investment rates certainly are gonna drop as well.
Correct. I mean.
Not that much, because it's.
Now, there are some other things that happen because of that. So there's stuff called arbitrage that we have to look at when we're borrowing money like this, so.
French term.
I would try to explain it, but I'm not sure I can. So, it's an interesting, um, yes.
I remember from economics class, it's fine. All right, uh, we really appreciate you being here, helped settle us, so thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions? For her? Thank you. All right, um, big number. I don't know if we've ever done this in Rowan County. Other questions do we have? All right, um, then I'll offer up as a motion, a resolution, uh, authorizing the filing of an application for approval of an installment financing contract authorized by North Carolina General Statute 160A-20, making certain funds required by North Carolina General Statutes 159-151. For a second for discussion? Second. Further discussion? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hit or done? All right, uh, Anna, you know, you're still up.
Yeah. So the next item is just a, um, an approval for the underwriters that'll be needed, um, when it's time to sell the, the bonds. Um, so, um, we received some, um, I guess you would call them quotes, from the underwriters. And Truist, um, was the top choice. So they would be the senior, um, one. And then Hilltop Securities was the, will be the co, or secondary, yeah, on the day that we're selling. And those contracts, I assume I will bring back to you, um, at a later meeting, but I just need your approval to get all that started.
And how did we, um, was this RFQ, RFP?
So, yeah, so Amy, um, also assisted with that process and provided the, um, I believe the score sheet or information of what they did was part of your packet to show, but yes, we did an RFP process for that.
Ed?
Questions on that?
That you need to know?
I can comment on it if you would like. Um, so yeah, so we went through a request for proposal process, uh, sent out to different underwriting firms across the state. Um, and Truist came in with the lowest, we call take-down lowest fee proposal. Hilltop was the second lowest fee proposal, so, uh, they'll be jointly underwriting the, underwriting the bond issue using Truist's lower fee. Um, Truist has a lot of experience, um, you know, across the state. They've, um, been, been very active in the market lately. And, um, and Hilltop, they're a little bit of a newer underwriter to North Carolina, but they're a national firm. Um, and are very, uh, very motivated to do a very good job selling bonds. So we thought that would be a good team to have Truist and Hilltop together, uh, selling the county's bonds.
And explain in layman's terms exactly what, what they do.
So they, they sell the bonds. So, uh, so where your, our role is your financial advisor. So we're there advising you how to structure the transaction. The underwriter is a separate firm that when we, when you sell bonds in the public market, they're the one, they're the ones that are actually selling the bonds to the investors. And if they, in the event that, uh, bonds, there, if there were not enough orders for the bonds that are being sold on the particular day, the underwriter will come in and make a bid to the county to buy those bonds on, on your behalf. Uh, so in most cases, they'll have investors lined up to sell those bonds to. But, uh, the underwriters are there to support the bond issue in the event that, um, you know, there, there's, you know, we don't have as many orders in or, um, you know, for some reason, uh, you know, we hit a volatile marketplace. Um, so the underwriters there to, is kind of the, the go-between, between the issuer and the investors. So they're, they're, they're actually selling the bonds on the, on the sale date.
Now, I assume there's, uh, state requirements about the, uh, financial rating and the ability for those folks to come up with the cash. They handle all of that?
Correct. So they will, so you're talking about on how does, who comes up with the cash to?
Say that if, if Truist was, they would have a, they would be required to have financial wherewithal to, to handle the money. And to, um, let's say, if they sell the bonds, then the, um, there would not, the, what I'm trying to get to is the financial, um, strength of the association who is raising the money for us.
Yes. So they all have, um, capital requirements that they need to adhere to. And so they have a certain amount of capital. So in the event that they did not have investors ready to buy the bonds, they do have the financial wherewithal to be able to take those bonds, buy them, uh, in lieu of having an investor. So yeah, that, that and.
Own them if they have to.
And own, and own them. It's their, it's at that point, it's at the end of that sale date, it's their risk, not yours. So they will make an offer on that day of sale, regardless if they have all the bonds or sold or not. Um, so if, in the event that they don't have investors lined up, they, it, it doesn't matter to the county, they're gonna make you an offer. It's our job to let you know if we think that offer is fair or not, based on the market. Um, and if, you know, it's so, at that point, once the county says, yes, we, we agree, you know, you know, we accept your offer, there's no more risk to the county. That's, that's the underwriter's responsibility to sell the rest of those bonds.
We, um, some of us, who are a little more mature than others, had to live through 2009 and 2008. And, and many things can happen overnight with financial institutions. And in my, uh, improper way, that was what I was trying to get at, is that they, they will be held to standards that they will have to go through. This is the first time I borrowed $75 million.
Yeah, you, you're exactly right. And, and so the underwriters that we sent the proposal to, we, they are all, they are typical underwriters that we see and we see them on pretty large transactions. So, um, Truist was just the senior underwriter on a Wake County transaction, for instance. So, um, which I think was, I know, I know it was north of $100 million, so. Um, but yeah, they do, they, they do have the financial capital and the, and the strength to be able to underwrite bonds for the county.
Thank you. All right, so our motion would be, um, approve the award of underwriting services to Truist Securities as senior manager and Hilltop Securities Incorporated as co-manager. And authorize, and also authorize the county manager and/or finance director to sign any needed agreement for services. I'll make that in the form of a motion.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Uh, so we have a motion to approve, uh, um, Truist as the senior manager and Hilltop Securities as co-manager and authorize county manager or finance director to sign any needed agreements for services as underwriter. Motion, Mike is the second. Any further discussion?
Aye.
Thank you. I think we only have one board appointment. Um, just so you know, thank you for being here and safe travels. Um, following the board appointment, um, I'm gonna ask that we take a three-minute recess and come back for another item that we're gonna, uh, adjust our agenda for. Parks and Recreation, Andrea Bacham applied for appointment to that large seat, Parks and Recreation. A motion and a second to approve Andrea.
I move.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And that's it. And I'd like to, um, make a motion. We go into recess for three to five minutes. Um, wanna talk with council and then we'll be right back.
Is this a closed session or an opening?
All right, um, we're, we're back from recess and, uh, I would like us to revisit, um, there's an economic development deal going in the county's, um, industrial park. And so we've been working on this, heavens, I don't know, since last June or something. Um, we had on our agenda, uh, items T and LL that we removed. Um, but we'd like to, uh, put, place them back on there on the active, um, agenda, T and LL. And, um, so, uh, the developer and the end user are working out some agreements. And so, um, we just wanna, we wanna make sure those agreements are worked out, um, before we, um, move forward with selling the land. But, and we intended to do that tonight, um, uh, but there's just circumstances, uh, that gave us pause to pull back. And we have spoken with both of them and, and, uh, they agreed to that. But one of the things that the developer said is, hey, you know, we know that now that it's just not time is money, um, getting to market is money. And, uh, this, this end user has got about $100 million in backlog. So it's important that, um, they make sure about where their project is going. And so what we'd like to do is move items T and LL, uh, back onto the active agenda. And we'd, we'd like to just, um, modify, uh, item LL, I suppose, uh, to, to say that we'll approve the sale, uh, to Beacon Developers. I'd have to look and see how it's listed exactly. Subject, um, to, uh, AMREP and Beacons intent to close. So AMREP is still doing some work on their end. And, um, so we would, we would approve items T and L, T and LL with the condition of that the, the sale to Beacon, who is the developer, is subject to AMREP and Beacons, uh, confirmation to us of their intent to close. What we don't wanna do is to drag this out for even days. Um, it's, it's important that if this project moves forward, that we get it done as quickly as possible. We could have come back on Friday and scheduled a, um, special called meeting that would have taken 48 hours to, to make happen. It may have put hardship on some of you that are working. And so this is a way of getting around that by just putting the condition on the sale and, uh, it'll move things on, on a lot quicker, okay? So, um, first of all, make a motion to reconsider the agenda to move items, uh, well, let me. Well, let me make a motion that reconsider the agenda for tonight. We have a motion, a second to that. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then, I'd like to make a motion, we move items T and LL, then from the consent agenda, well, which is technically removed, to the open agenda. Do we have a second?
Aye.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Then would also like to approve the sale to Beacon Developers, subject to AMREP and Beacon's written intent to close. We have a second.
I have a question, Mr. Jim.
Yes, yes.
Will we need to put a price on that, or?
It's already, the price is in there. All the other terms of the contract would remain the same. The only condition is, based on subsequent meetings of the buyer, to provide us written confirmation that they're prepared to close.
Good question. All right. We have a motion, a second. Any other questions? All right. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Move.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, guys.